I would like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order at 6:12 Commissioner Mora, can you help us with the pleasure of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Please rise. Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Secretary, may we have roll call, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. Chair Carbo Hawk is out today. Vice Chair Ayala will be conducting today's meeting. Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Do you have a quorum?
Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications?
None.
None.
I have none.
None for myself as well. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the Planning Commission. Would anyone from the audience wish to comment on any of the consent items? Consent item A, compliance review report for alcohol sales conditional use permit case number 11A dash SFS swap meet. Consent item B, compliance review report for entertainment conditional use permit case number 11 dash SFS swap meet. Consent item C, compliance review report for alcohol sales conditional use permit case number 69 dash ALDI food market. Consent item D, conditional use permit cup case number 729 dash four dash eight compliance review of a precious metals foundry facility at 8444 secure away within the M1 light manufacturing zone, The Buyer's Inc. For consent of items numbers 5A, 5B, 5C, and 5D, is there a motion and a second for approval for the consent items?
I'll move 5A through 5D.
Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Through the chair, the Planning Commission's approval of this item tonight will become final 14 days after the applicant receives written notice of the Commission's action. However, this item may be appealed to the City Council by the applicant and/or any other interested party, but the appeal must be in writing and filed with the City Clerk within 14 days.
Item number six, public hearing, conditional use permit cup case number 838 to allow an outpatient counseling and substance use disorder (SUD) treatment center at 9300 Santa Fe Springs Road within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone and adopting a notice of exemption under CEQA Section 15301 existing facilities, La Cada. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to please present item number six.
Good evening, Council members, members of the audience, staff. Tonight I present to you item number six, conditional use case permit number 838. The site is located at 9300 Santa Fe Springs Road, and the applicant tonight is L.A. Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, La Cada. It is currently zoned in the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, and the general plan designation is A little background of La Cada. So Los Angeles Centers for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, La Cada, is a licensed and certified substance use and behavioral treatment provider. It is one of the largest nonprofit continuums of care for behavioral health in Los Angeles County, serving vulnerable and low-income populations. And La Cada is currently operating a similar use, an 18,000 square foot tenant space located at 11015 Lumenfield Avenue within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Additionally, La Cada is a provider by the State of California Department of Healthcare Services and the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health Substance Abuse Prevention There are additional location services available in the city of Santa Fe Springs and surrounding areas. Their accomplishments. So La Cada on June 16, 2022, celebrated its 50-year anniversary, and La Cada has been chosen as a top pick treatment center by Theravive, a network of mental health practitioners representing thousands of credential therapists and psychologists. And it's also worth noting, La Cada is recognized by other agencies with similar line of work for their astounding work within the community. The request before you tonight is on my second 2023 Los Angeles Center for Alcohol and Drug Abuse, known as La Cada, filed a request for conditional use permit case number 838 to allow an outpatient counseling and substance use disorder (SUD) treatment center at 9300 Santa Fe Springs Road. No expansion of the existing use is being proposed as part of this request. A little bit about the project site. So the project site occupies approximately 14,240 square feet of approximately 64,581 square foot multi-tenant industrial building, and the project site was previously used as a daytime educational service use for disabled adults. And all adjacent properties are also zoned M2 heavy manufacturing zone. Additionally, the project site is located on the northeast corner of Santa Fe Springs Road and Ann Street on a parcel measuring about 4.06 acres, and the nearest school is St. Paul High School, located approximately 1,000 feet southeast of the project site, and the nearest residential land use are located approximately 1350 feet from southeast of the project site and are outside the city limits within the unincorporated area of L.A. jurisdiction. So hours of operation for this site. The outpatient counseling and substance use disorder (SUD) treatment center will include a staffing pattern of a maximum of 57 staff employees Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m., and from Saturday from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Do note, this is an outpatient counseling and substance use disorder treatment center. No in-house or in-living facility. So parking. A total of 218 parking stalls will be provided by the multi-tenant building, and as you can see, tabulation here gives you a breakdown of all the units that are located in that facility, and the required number of parking stalls based on the use is 196 parking stalls, and they are providing 218 parking stalls, which exceeds the minimum requirements. So the city zoning ordinance calculates the required number of parking stalls based on the total building square area. After staff review and analysis, staff made a determination that the project qualifies for a categorically exemption from CEQA per Section 15301 of existing facilities, and the reason for the exception is no addition to the existing structure or lease area, and no modifications are being proposed. Legal notices, the public hearing for the proposed project was sent by first-class mail to all property owners whose names and addresses appear on the latest county assessor's roll within 500 feet of the exterior boundaries of the subject property on August 31, 2023. And the legal notices were also posted in the Santa Fe Springs City Hall, the City Town Center kiosk, and the city's library, and published in a newspaper of general circulation at the Whittier Daily News on August 31, 2023, as required by the state zoning and development laws by the city zoning ordinances, and no comments and inquiries were received as of today. For your consideration tonight, that the project is located within the M2 heavy manufacturing zone, that the nearest school is St. Paul High School, located approximately 1,000 feet southeast of the project site, and the nearest residential and land uses are located approximately 1350 feet southeast of the project site, additionally that there is sufficient parking to accommodate the new operation and existing multi-tenant building. The project is non-residential, meaning the patients will receive medical care without staying overnight. The services provided will add value to the community by helping to rehabilitate individuals and substance abuse disorders and directly reducing the potential for accidents or crimes. And additionally, even though code does not reference a distance buffer on sensitive land uses, additional security measures are being implemented by the applicant, such as 95% of the incoming patients will be transported by La Cada from their transitional living facilities to the proposed location for treatment. Patients are not equipped with vehicles due to their financial hardship. Security cameras will be installed and monitored by staff, and patients will be required to wait within the waiting room and not room the exterior of the facility. Staff recommendations is find and determine that the project be categorically exempt from CEQA under Section Class 15301 for existing facilities, approve conditional use permit case number 838, subject to conditions of states within the attached resolution, and adopt resolution number 249-2023, which incorporates the Planning Commission's findings and actions regarding this matter. And this concludes my presentation for you tonight. I do have the applicants here tonight to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item for the planning staff?
No questions.
I would like to open the public hearing at 6:24. I would like to call upon the applicants. If they wish to speak, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function at this
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick. I work for La Cada. We just wanted to thank you for considering our permit to extend our services for the community and offer our support to those in need. Thank you.
If you could please state your name and the city of residence for the record for the address of the Planning Commission?
Patrick Brulhart. City of residence is Duarte, California.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for the applicants?
No questions.
If there's anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter, if so, please use the raise hand function or approach the podium. Planning Commission Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item number six?
Vice Chair Ayala, no. No comments were received for this item.
I would like to close the public hearing at 6:26. Do the Commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for deliberation.
I just think it's a well job done that you guys are doing to help the community, and we're happy to have you here in Santa Fe Springs.
Also kind of what our other Commissioners said, you know, I have visited several of the La Cada facilities, met with some of the staff. I know a couple of you there, and you guys are doing a great job. I have met people that have gone through the program, and you know, they're trying to get back on their feet, and they do stumble. You know, they've returned to these places one, two, three times. They're always welcome with open arms, and I know that some of them, correct me if I'm wrong, would have become counselors at your facilities and share their experiences, and that way it's more somebody who actually comes to the facility, you know, meeting with someone that has gone through what they've gone through. So good job what you do. I commend you guys. Thank you.
And I concur. So is there a motion to approve resolution number 249-2023 for conditional use permit CUP case number 838?
I'll move.
Can I have a second? Planning Secretary, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Passes 4-0.
Through the chair, the Planning Commission's approval of this item tonight will become final 14 days after the applicant receives written notice of the Commission's action. However, this item may be appealed to the City Council by the applicant and/or any other interested party, but the appeal must be in writing and filed with the City Clerk within 14 days.
Item number seven, zone determination ZD case number 2023-01, to determine that a battery energy storage system with direct connection to a public utility grid is a similar and compatible use with other similarly principally permitted uses listed in the ML limited manufacturing zone and adopting a notice of exemption under CEQA Section 15061 B3, common says exception, Grid Store LLC. I would like to call upon the planning consultant Alejandro De Leora to provide a brief presentation regarding item number seven.
Good evening, Commissioners. Today we're presenting briefly on zone determination ZD case number 2023 dash 01 for a request to determine that a battery energy storage system with direct connection to a public utility grid is a similar and compatible use with other similarly principally permitted uses in the ML limited manufacturing zone. As part of the public noticing for this project, we did send out legal notice and mailing to the properties that are 500 feet away from the exterior boundaries of the site, and as a response to that, on September 7, 2023, we received a comment letter, which is Attachment 8 in your reports, from Bridgeland Resources in opposition to the project. In response to that, on September 8, 2023, the applicant submitted a request to defer the Planning Commissioner's consideration of this project to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on October 9, 2023. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation to open the public hearing, receive public testimony from anyone in the audience or on Zoom wishing to speak. Thereafter, continue this matter to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on October 9, 2023. Thank you.
I would like to open the public hearing at 6:30. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function or approach the podium.
We have someone wishing to speak from the public on phone, so they will be speaking through the mic.
Please state your name and city of residence for the record and
Sure.
and address of Planning Commission. Also, please note there's a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
I think it's ready to go.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jackson McNeil. Thanks for bearing with the technical difficulties here. I'm a land use attorney representing Bridgeland Resources. Bridgeland owns many properties in Santa Fe Springs, and in this case, Bridgeland owns a property that would be surrounded by Applicate Grid Stores' proposed battery storage use. Now, I know, of course, that this is not a DPA or CUP hearing. No specific project is before you tonight. You're considering whether to allow battery storage uses as a principally permitted use in the ML zone. I also know that it's likely the result is that you'll continue this hearing, but my client had asked me to make a few preliminary comments this evening. In brief, this is not a use that the city should permit by right to allow battery storage uses as a principally permitted use. The Commission must define that battery storage uses are similar and compatible with other permitted uses in the ML zone, and that is simply not true for battery storage uses. Battery storage presents a real risk of fire, of explosion, of toxic gas release. All right. Where did you hear me? Sorry. I don't know where you lost me, but in brief, this is not a use that the city should allow by right. And look, we get that the ML is an industrial zone. By nature, industrial uses present risks not presented by commercial or residential ones, but that doesn't mean you should ignore the very real risks that battery storage uses present. At minimum, you should require a CUP. Public utility service uses require a CUP. Nursing homes require a CUP. A high-risk use like battery storage battery storage uses are suitably located and appropriately conditioned to protect the community. Just briefly, Grid Stores project here, which surrounds my client's existing oil extraction facilities, my client's very worried about that. They're worried about safety. Not only that, but the project would be located on top of land that our client has surface rights to for future oil extraction. Those are issues that won't be addressed if this is a principally permitted use, but could plausibly be addressed if a CUP was required. So together, we respectfully request that the Commission deny the zone determination to the extent that the city believes that any battery storage uses should be allowed in the city. At minimum, a CUP should be required. Thank you, and I appreciate any questions.
Thank you very much. I think they heard.
Planning Commission Secretary, were there any comments submitted via email for item
number seven?
Yes, we received a comment that was forwarded to your emails from Mr. Jackson, who was just speaking, and that was the only comment received.
Do you have the applicants in the audience who would like to speak? She already said that.
No, yes, I'll call him here.
Yes, that's all right.
I would like to call upon the applicant for rebuttal. Do you have anything that you would like to say to address public speakers?
The applicant is present.
Good evening, Council members and city staff. My name is Ryan Schock from Portland, Oregon. I'm Grid Stores Director of Development, the applicant for this battery storage project. In response to that comment letter, I just wanted to highlight that Grid Stores' aim here with this project is to be a long-term owner and operator and involved in Santa Fe Springs long-term. Part of that obviously comes with being a good neighbor, and we recognize that. As Alejandro mentioned, we did reach out to neighboring landowners and businesses. I think there was over 200 sent out. We did receive this comment from Bridgeland late last week, and we have been working to address the comment, so we agree with the approach to continue this item so that we have time to address all of the comments by the October meeting. We have reached out to Bridgeland to start those discussions and are confident that we can address all of their concerns that were raised in the letter.
Do the Commissioners have any comments regarding this matter? This will be the time for deliberation. Is there a motion to continue zone determination case number 2023-01 to the October 9, 2023 Planning Commissioner meeting? Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Oh, aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Oh, since the matter was continued, there is no statement from me this time. And through the chair, if anybody had difficulty hearing Bridgeland's representative, a lot of what he said is in that letter, which is in your packet. Okay.
So ordered. Item number eight, new business, Parkway Tree Removal Appeal Decision, resident request for removal of Parkway Tree at 10318 Harvest Avenue. I would like to call upon Municipal Services Manager Kevin Pearman to present item number eight.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. I was made aware that the resident wanted to attend by Zoom. I just tried to call him right now. He was unavailable, so I'd like to push it to the next commission meeting next month to have a chance to respond to anything that we have presented today.
So you want to continue, Kevin?
Yeah, I want to push it to the next meeting next month.
Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item for public work staff? Can I have a motion to continue for the next meeting?
I'll move to continue till October 9.
So Planning Secretary, roll call, please.
Definitely. Vice Chair Ayala?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Passes 4-0 to continue item eight to the October 9 Planning Commission meeting.
Item number nine, public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item, not on the agenda. The Planning Secretary will see if you have your raised hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Vice Chair Ayala, I did not receive any comment cards.
I will now close the public comments and move on to the next item. Are there any announcements from staff?
I have three quick announcements from the planning staff. First announcement, as you may or may not know, the month of October is National Community Planning Month. Each year, for the last four years, staff has held a photo contest, and we will do so again this year. This year, we will have three categories.
This year, we will have three categories. First category is something featured in city location, city event, and city public art. So winner in each category will receive a cash award of $125. We'll have other activities to be determined in the next month. Second item, staff wanted to bring to your attention that we received a development plan approval application for Raising Canes at the northeast corner of Bloomfield and Imperial. That should be forthcoming and should be before you sometime before the end of the year. Third, I just wanted to give you an update in regards to the targeted zoning code update that you had approved back in July. That received a second reading by the city council on September 5, and similar to other ordinances, it will become effective 30 days afterwards, so that ordinance will be effective October 5 of this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any comments or something to report? On?
None.
All right. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of the victims of 9/11 and the first responders. The next regular planning commission meeting is scheduled for October 9, 2023. Like to adjourn the meeting at 6:44.